7:03, we call the planning board meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for coming. First on the agenda...
Is this everybody?
I believe this is... I haven't heard from John. I don't know if anybody else has heard from him.
He's often like that with us.
Typically different.
Well, we can keep things moving. Thank you, John. The Susie subdivision is first on the agenda. If you want to come sit up here, you can tell us about it. We have your plans here.
Okay. So some revised... Do you have one?
We do, actually.
Are those revised? No. So we're going to do the... Those are small?
I have some more.
Sue.
Oh, okay.
No, you can find it, so I apologize. I don't know where it is.
All right. Sure. Can you see you have a neezel or no?
I know we do, and it's not legal at this time. I apologize for that.
I have one.
Mine for you.
Thank you, Chris. Hey, John. Welcome.
Sure. Thanks.
You guys go. We're starting with the Susie subdivision now.
You all set?
Go ahead.
Okay. For the record, Kevin McEnany here representing the owner and advocate Keith Susie is meeting this evening. He's the trustee of the trust. And so I passed out some 117s of some revised plans that were based on the comments that John had submitted earlier. And I actually had a narrative here that I'll go through, and then I'll leave that with you. So this is a two lot subdivision number four on Portland Avenue. It's basically, there's an existing house, an existing shop that was a plumbing shop, that what the desire is to split the two so that the house can be sold separately from the shop. The house lot would be 2.28 acres. The lot with the shop on it would be 3.23 acres. There's an existing septic system on each of these lots right now, one for the shop and one for the house. There is a common well that's located in this location right here. However, for state subdivision approval, we have shown potential wells on both lots as well as a 4K areas because they're required to have state subdivision approval. So that's in your second sheet, the total sheet that's on there. So you can see the reason that we... Just to give an idea, the reason that we drew the lines the way we did, the requirement is that there be a 25-foot setback from structures. And as it turns out, we're 50.1 feet between the two buildings, and we barely make that. So we split that 25 feet from the garage on the house lot, 25.21 feet from the shop on the abutting lot. And then we just, we angled the lot so in order to make the requirements for upland areas. And we subtracted wetlands. So we have the minimum lot size for the wetlands as well as the upland area. So I have also, there was a little bit of confusion as to the trust, the actual name of the trust. It was listed a couple of different ways. I think the application headed as, had it were family in there, and that's not actually the case. It's actually the Robert R. Susie and Gloria F. Susie Revocable Living Trust. Okay? So I have a revised application that just reflects that, if you want to see that for the record. And then I also revised the authorization to have you represent the trust, and that's posted there as well. Can I pass that?
So Keith, when did you become the sole trustee?
Oh, three, two and a half years.
So here's the trust document, just so we know.
So this trust document you gave me, you supplied as Keith and Gloria, right?
Right, and Gloria is deceased.
Well, you didn't tell me that.
So the, yeah, well, that's what I was going to explain to you. So the terms of the trust states that if we are deceased, then it becomes sole.
Sole, okay, cool.
So with regard to the comments that John had, I don't know if you have those in front of you or not, or take a look at those. I have a narrative here just that we go through and address those issues. So with regard to item one, I think we just talked about that. That was regarding the official name of the trust, and Keith is the sole trustee. Item two was the title of the plan, and we revised the plan to reflect the Robert R. Susie and Gloria F. Susie Revocable Living Trust. The third item had to do with the two...
Can I explain?
Yeah.
So if you look at the plan, you'll notice that both the existing house and the existing shop are entirely non-conforming. They're entirely within the front setback. The lots along Portland Avenue have a 100-foot front setback. It's my opinion that these, that this subdivision does not create, does not require a variance. These are non-conforming structures. The subdivision doesn't make them any more non-conforming than the newly created side lot line. Doesn't create a setback issue. It's simply that the houses are within the front setback. I had asked Kevin to ask Tom Clark for a letter saying that he's okay with this, but I think Kevin's had several times and never heard back.
I can follow up.
But I don't, it's sort of critical that we make a decision right now. I mean, I guess maybe the board could weigh in on this, but again, the houses are there. I don't think the subdivision is doing, you know, if the new, if the new lot line was creating a setback issue, then I would think obviously it'd vary, but I don't see how the subdivision creates any more non-conformity than is already there. But in order to accept the application as complete and move on, we sort of have to, we really need an answer. I will tell you, I ran it by your town attorney, John Radigan, and he didn't think that there was, he didn't think this was a, there wouldn't be a requirement for a variance in this case. And I think you spoke to...
I spoke to the FX Bruton's attorney in Dover, and he was of the same opinion. It would not affect, the subdivision does not impact the non-conforming. They're non-conforming now, doesn't increase the non-conforming.
But in order to accept and ultimately act on this, you know, the board, you guys have to be on board with that.
How far are they?
They're right up, well, they're, he doesn't give measurements.
Right, they're 20 inches. I mean, they're probably 20, 22 feet, 25.
Well, here's the lot line.
That's the right of...
Oh, okay. Because they're probably 20 feet there and maybe 30 there.
Yeah, 30. There's significantly more from the paved section, but the right edge paved section.
But again, they're there.
Let me just take the opportunity to recognize Glenn Chase, who's an alternate to be a full member at this meeting since we're down one for purposes of discussion and voting later. I agree that it's not any more non-conforming. Is there any significance in creating an additional non-conforming lot as opposed to having one whole?
Well, both the lots are, both the lots are conforming. It's simply the structures on the lot that are not conforming. So that's why I don't, everything else about these lots is conforming. We could grant it there.
Well, you can. You had to go as ample as possible.
And again, I don't, I don't think that it's, I don't believe it's required. I did ask Kevin, like I said, to ask, in touch with Tom, and he did try on three pages with no success. So I don't, you guys, you're going to have to make a decision this afternoon.
We could potentially stay the application until the next meeting. I'm looking at options. I want to, I want to go through options. We could call it incomplete. We could call it no worse as to, you know, continue.
You could not accept the application and put it off another month. Here, this is, you know, I've had this opinion before in, not with regard to Tom, but with regard to the fire chief. I wrote my memo on November 1. It's now, what is it, 12, 13? I don't know when this was submitted to the town, but I didn't get it right away. And I'm not trying to throw anybody, I just feel as though, you know, to ask someone three times for an opinion and not get it, isn't it fair to ask the applicant to come back?
I agree. I'm just worried about the legal implications of skirting the zoning board if that's what is legally required, which I don't necessarily think so, but you know, what are the legal ramifications of proceeding?
Well, I suppose, a couple. One is that the selectman, I suppose, could appeal the planning board's decision that they should have had a variance. Or a, and a butter could appeal and say they should, they should have had a variance. You know, I don't, I don't know. I guess I can't give you any other guidance other than I can't tell you, I talked to John Radigan. I do have a great deal of respect for FX Bruton. I wasn't on the phone with Kevin and he, and I think, and I share the same thing. So there's three people.
They were conforming when the word was tested.
They predated zoning.
Predate zoning. I think it predated zoning.
Both buildings.
Yeah, so they predated zoning. So they're legally non-conforming.
I think the 100-foot setback was actually put in quite a bit after, you know, fairly recently, I'd say, in the last 10, 12 years.
It's not original to the zoning, which is 1971. So there's all that, it predates all that.
It seemed to me if John has had a discussion with town attorney and if you were asking the town attorney's opinion, you know...
I don't have any comments about it. Glenn and John, I'm wondering how you all feel.
I'm not that com, I mean, I don't know. I, I'd like to see it in writing for Mr. Radigan, Attorney at Radigan. The general principles are you don't, I don't like expanding a non-conforming property, but in a way it is in the sense you're taking one and creating two. I'm just not that, I don't want to hear about that.
I don't have an issue, on the other hand, that I see, you know, two pieces of property from one that existing buildings, nothing is changing with the exception of the lot line, that I don't see that it should be the only thing if everything else works. I mean, if it, if it has to be signed off at a later date, I don't have any issue with that. If we could approve it and then, but whatever your call is, I feel comfortable that this is not an issue.
So to open the public hearing, we have to move this as complete, which means that we need to determine this is...
Yeah. It is just, I just want to not correct Glenn, but follow up on what Glenn said. This is not an issue of giving an approval subject to. You can't even accept it if it's not, if you don't think it says, if you don't think it meets the requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance. So it would be a, I think you could probably continue it, but you can't, you can't approve a subject to.
Also, I believe this board is not permitted to not accept an application as complete based on another board. So if the zoning board, if there's needed zoning board approval, we can't not accept the application. I remember reading in the...
So we can also, John, wouldn't you say, vote to find it complete and then defer it later to zoning if that's what's determined at that point?
Look, there's situations that I want to do with real big projects, you know, huge commercial projects where you get five months into a review and all of a sudden you realize, oh my God, you know, we need this with a variance. That happens, that happens all the time. Not from, through anybody's fault. This is a clear case where it's right in front of your face, you know. And I would say to you, if you think there's, if there's a problem, if you all think that a variance is required, then I would not accept the application. I would continue it until, to a later date and maybe decision that. Again, I don't, I don't believe, I don't agree with that position. I don't think a variance is required. Josh.
John, let me ask you, does this, does this property have a non-conforming structure on it?
It has two.
Each lot would have.
Actually, it's three.
So, you know, the zoning ordinance 5.3 says the following principles control structures that do not conform to the current ordinance. So wouldn't that ordinance apply to the situation? And if not, why not?
What does the ordinance say, John?
It says, "The following principles control structures that do not conform to the current ordinance." And it says, number one, the two-dimensional footprint of a structure, the setbacks established by the ordinance is may be expanded.
Yeah, that's, that's not, okay, that doesn't...
Without further intrusion into the setback, if granted, a special exemption by the Rollins-Rollinsford zoning board of adjustment.
They're not asking for an expansion.
All right. Then it says why, under what conditions you can, they have to be met in order for that to happen.
Again, they're not asking for, to expand either structure. Either, any of the three structures. There's a detached garage, a house, and a shop. There's no plan to expand any of them.
And if they were done at that point, there would be a setback.
Sure, then, yeah. It's my understanding that you want to sell one or the other or both.
I'm doing it just so my niece can buy the house.
Okay. So if Keith, if Keith's niece buys the house, decides she wants to expand it, she's a... She can't expand, none of these can be expanded at all without a variance.
So the operation of the shop won't change. You're not turning it into a nightclub.
Right now it's a story to a guy.
It's a...
Sorry, no, somebody...
Kevin?
Wait a minute, I'm a married man.
I think, I think the way to look at this is, is what is the issue of the non-conforming? What causes the non-conformity? And what causes the non-conformity is the houses and the structures being within the setback. So if it's on one lot or two lots, I don't think you, I don't think the test is that you're increasing that non-conformity. That exists today and will exist whether you have one lot or two lots. But, you know, any change in the structure, obviously that's a different ballgame. But I think the test of not increasing the non-conformity is what we're asking for, is the way to look at it.
I agree with that. My only process question, I suppose, is, John, is there something about creating, is there something about a subdivision or creating an additional lot that would cause one to have to evaluate all such things about the lot so that you would create the special exemption or somehow, you know, send it to the zoning board for that reason? Since you're evaluating the lots, is there something about that process?
Both lots, everything about, both of these lots meet the frontage requirements. They both meet the minimum lots size requirements. The houses happen to meet, they also meet the side setback requirements. So I don't, there's, the only non-conformity with both of these lots is what exists there today. And the fact is that all three structures are within the setbacks, within the front setback. So I, again, this subdivision is not creating, in my mind, any more non-conformity that exists there today. I can say one, this is what, if the board is struggling with this, and we could put it back on the applicant and say, here's what we can do. We can delay it a month and hopefully we'll have a response from Tom. Or we can proceed, understanding that a butter appeals, that it takes, that we made an error of zoning, then there are risks of having their appeal, their approval overturned. Those are two options. I don't know. It is, it does say expansion, it does indicate expanding. I'm a little bit concerned, but I guess I'm not extremely concerned.
I'm not concerned.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to accept the application submitted as complete.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good.
Hurry one.
Hurry one.
So should I just continue with comments?
Please.
Yes, John. Okay, so I think we covered the non-conformity issue. There was a concern about the driveways and that, right now, there are three drive cuts that exist on Route 4. And they, they are commonly, they're separated by several islands, a couple islands. It's actually one, yeah, there is a stuff on there. So the idea is to keep those in existence and for each of the lots to have access over both of those. So we've shown on the plan a potential access easement, and we have a note on the plan that says access easement will be recorded accordingly. And we can show, prior to you signing the plan, we can get a copy or a draft of that easement for your review. The second, the next item we had to do with the well and the common use of the well. Currently, both structures use that one well that's on the house lot, and we'd like to continue that use. So we're also going to provide you with a well use easement, and that's noted on the plan as well. And that'll be for your review before final signing of it. There was a notation about the monuments being set or to be set. I have, we have not set all those monuments, so I changed the plan to say that they're all to be set. And then further down, there's going to be a monument certification that we will say that those are set when we get those done.
Kevin, I missed something, but we talked about it, I thought. We still, I don't know how I missed this, the utility easement. You've got a utility pole out front?
Right.
That services both the house and the shop, I believe.
Yeah, the services come off that.
And where, and so you must, so you also need a utility easement going from that pole to the house, correct? See what I'm saying? Looking over here, because it's on the...
It's shops.
On the shop, sorry. Somebody goes that way and then that way.
Right.
But...
We were going to do like a blanket easement as far as that goes.
That's fine.
Because the overhead services, not underground.
Yep. Maybe it doesn't, it may not hit the, you have to shoot it. Maybe it doesn't hit the corner of the lot.
Yeah, I think it's pretty close.
Looks awfully close to me, but I don't know where it hits the house.
So then there was a notation about setting a monument at the rear of the house lot back in this area. It's actually a 24-inch oak tree that's right on the corner, so we're not going to set a marker, but we did note where that tree is in that location. And then we had to do signatures, my signature and the wetland scientist's signature, which we will complete. We also been in contact with the assessor's office, the assessor, as with regards to the tax map and lot numbers that we're proposing on there, and they were acceptable to assess them. I think that's everything that I have. I have to answer any questions that might happen.
It's two of them.
Two of them.
Except you.
Sure, but the service, I would assume that the service probably comes off the pole and splits. What I don't know...
It's the overhead right there.
What I don't, I don't know where the meter is for the house. Here's the pole. If the meter, if the meter crosses that lot line anywhere, then you need a meter. So you may not, Kevin could go out there and figure it out. But if it does, it's easy to cover with that easement.
Okay, so we'll open up the public hearing and hear from the public any comments or questions about this proposed subdivision. Mr. Lowry?
Yes, for those of us who remain ignorant, where is this property in relation to a known landmark on Route 4?
Excuse me, can you give me your name and your address as well?
Oh, I thought I had enough notoriety, I'm sorry. Nelson Lowry.
I'm new to town.
L-E-W-R-Y.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Nelson Lowry.
Damon Lihawk, the dancer. That's right.
And what's your address?
327 Rollins Road in town.
Mr. Lowry, the subject is on Portland Ave near General Sullivan. It's two houses to the Dover side.
Okay.
Two lots.
So if you're going toward Dover, it's on the right-hand side.
Correct.
I think I know. I mean, with the mention of the shop, I think I know where it is. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Lowry.
Tony Foster, Rollins Road. I disagree with you guys on your variance. Because see, the planner saying is really not making any more non-conforming. Well, you just made a second non-conforming lot. That really should go to the zoning board of adjustment to let them hear it before you guys make your final decision.
Any other comments? We'll close the public hearing on the Susie subdivision. Yes, you're right, indeed. I amend that. Let's continue it. That's always a better idea. Okay, so at this, at this point, John, your recommendations, we're going to...
Well, you've accepted it. It's my opinion, you can approve this with conditions. My conditions would be number four.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, number what? Number five, the easements.
Eleven.
Number eight, nine, 10, and 11. I'm sorry, 10's gone. Eight, nine, so number five, eight, nine, and 11. So, yeah, Kevin would have to sign and certify the plan. Damon Burke signs the plan. We need a certificate of documentation, guaranteeing it all.
Do we also need four? I'm sorry to interrupt you. The easement, is that marked? I thought you said you were going to revise.
He's got that on there.
Is it on there?
He's got, I don't have, I don't have a plan, but I don't have a revised plan, but he shows an easement here. Yeah, he shows the easement, but we want to at least look at the language.
All right.
To make sure it covers what we want to cover.
So you're adding that as a condition?
It's already in. Number five.
Well, actually, four should be...
Yeah, that was speaking about four. Yeah, I think four too.
Four, five.
Four, five, eight, nine, and 11, right, would be the conditions of the four.
If you move, you can move.
I make a motion to accept based on...
Wait, wait, hold. I forgot.
There are two waiting for request.
Where are they?
So the first one had to do with the high-intensity soil survey. We're asking for a waiver on that. And then the second had to do... And then the, the second had to do with setting granite markers where they're required. The new lot line that we're creating, as it is on the right-of-way line of Route 4, is within the pavement section of one of the driveways. So my suggestion, or my recommendation, or I guess we request a waiver, that we don't set a granite bound there and that we set a, either a magnetic nail or a railroad spike or something similar to that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that waiver is required, I mean, there's no way you're going to put a granite bound.
Okay.
I think, and I agree that that's not an exception, except for the his mapping is, I mean, that's, I think that's a reasonable waiver. Nothing new is proposed. So before you take an action, you should, the board should consider granting a waiver. Again, I don't believe that there will be, the granite bound, there's no way they can comply, so I don't think it's, I don't think you need to waive it. And they're providing a reasonable alternative. But you do need to act on the waiver of Section 10-2K, which is the high intensity soil survey. They already, they have, they have math wellens, they proved out the 4K areas for both septic systems and they can put wells in the lot, so I don't, I don't think that his map would be any...
Is there a reason not to include that in the full motion?
I think it should be granted, I think it should be granted separately. And the board may not agree with me on the second waiver for the granite bound, but I don't think you need to waive something that's not even practical.
So I would move that we issue a waiver for the high intensity soil survey on this application, because we do them one at a time.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have that, Sarah, Section 10-2K? Is there, is there an appetite for doing the other one just for the sake of being clean or do we not feel that?
Yeah, why not? So I also move that we issue a waiver waiving the need for a granite marker in the middle of the...
Which is Section 9.
Section 9.
And Section 10.
I'll second.
All those up there?
Aye.
So Glenn, would you, you were, you were ready for a...
Yes, so I would like to make the motion to accept the application as complete contingent on building the...
We, we have it complete, we have it complete.
On, you're making a motion to approve the plan?
With the following conditions.
With the following conditions. And those conditions are set out in item number four of John's technical memorandum, number five, number eight, number nine, and number 11.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Berry, welcome. The next item on the agenda, a subdivision named Oldenburg Lane off of Clement Road by its first pipe builders. If I could have that, I would like a copy of that. Chris, is there a revision from your submitted plan?
So Chair, Members of the Board, Christopher Berry, UCF, Surveying and Engineering Representing, Arthur Gacken, who operates currently under diverse pipe builders. The project location is off from, I'm sorry, is off from Clement Road. It was a topic of conversation for a subdivision that was performed about a year ago now. And the road name at that time was established as Oldenburg Lane. And what was approved then was an open space subdivision, which included a frontage lot on Clement Road, and that's been built out and sold. And then it included a roadway that came down to a small cul-de-sac here, and then three duplexes that were positioned out the back, and then there's a single-family home also positioned off from Oldenburg Lane. What we've, we're looking to modify the project here this evening. The open space area that was proposed at that time is not to be revised at all, so all of this will still be open space. All we're looking to do is revise everything that was within the development of the project to begin with. And what we're looking to do is shorten the roadway a little bit, so bring the cul-de-sac back, which obviously shortens the line for the roadway, reduces the impervious surface, reduces the amount of infrastructure that we'd have to maintain in the future. And instead of three duplexes, which would be six units, we're proposing five single-family house lots, or LCA, or what we're calling limited common areas. So there's a provision in the subdivision regulations and open space ordinance that allows for multiple single families to be on a lot, and we're choosing to basically break those out into condominium-style development. So the conversion from the duplexes to single families, essentially what we're doing is creating areas where people own, they own the house, and they own area around the house, very similar to a fee simple lot. But the area in total is actually owned in common. And so it'd be a former association set up for this area as well as the shared open space. The single-family house lot that was created off from Oldenburg Lane that would remain as a single-family house lot, would be a fee simple lot, and then the remainder of these would just simply be single-family homes. So what we've done is we modified the engineering documents to shorten the roadway. We reproduced a stormwater drainage and maintenance plan. That's gone to your engineer for review, civil consultants. Today I received their review back, and I'll talk about that in just a couple seconds. John had written a technical memo. We wanted to come to the board tonight, hopefully receive acceptance as complete, and then take any discussion points that you might have, and then come back in December, where hopefully we've addressed John's comments as well as civil consultants, and then any of the comments that have come out of the board. So I did take the time to show throughout the plan set where the single-family homes would be, where the effluent disposal areas would be, and where the wells for each one of those lots would be, as well as all the technical specifications for the road design itself. So it's a lot of information for a simple summation in that, all we're looking to do is shorten the road and then convert the project from six units down to five single-family lots. The last planning board process that we went through, there was a lot of discussion about buffering and tree planting along, and fencing along the stubble boundary line. None of, none of those specifications have changed, those are all still incorporated within the plan. The applicant and Oz have discussed some revisions to that moving on down the line, but for tonight's meeting, as well as finalization of the plans, we're still showing what we originally said we were proposing to do at that time. So other than that, there are no substantive changes to the, to the plan.
Did you want to speak to the comments and the technical reviews?
I can, if you'd like. John brings up a couple of points, which he and I have loosely discussed. He notes that a much better suitable building area for this lot would really be out here. We'd actually already produced a septic design and the applicant already has plans to build on this lot here. So we'd like to leave this area here, and to my knowledge, John felt that that was fine. I, I also like the idea of leaving this as open space, it's more congruent with the rest of the open space, and sort of keeps the development close to where the development is taking place. It's been a little bit since I've read John's document. He talks about stamps and signatures being on the plans. He talks about a couple of construction details that probably aren't warranted in this plan set. Most notably, he mentions in the plan set that we were proposing some lane striping at the front of the project. We call it the PM9 standard, it's a standard DOT striping method. It's probably not necessary for this project, it's a really low-volume road, it's local, and I think John's point of view is that it's just more paint that the town is going to have to maintain in the future, so it's not really necessary. And the board agrees that it's not necessary, we just remove it from the plan. So other than that, I think in the next round of revisions, we can take care of the rest of John's comments. The civil consultant comments, which we got today, as Jay points out in his cover, a lot of them are just small drafting things that he'd like modified to the plan set. The most notable thing that Jay points out is that the planning board granted us a waiver that allowed well radiuses to overlap and overlap lines. But what he points out is that on unit five, or LCA area number five, that well radius hangs into the road right-of-way, which is becoming more and more of an issue with salt contamination, things like that, getting into people's wells. And so Jay points out that though, we do it all the time, it's probably not the best location for the well, and so I've agreed to take that well and just move it down back and then modify the septic system for that lot out front. And then sort of the same comment for LCA area number one. I would just take this well and I would move it over so that the, that this well doesn't quite overlap the next LC area quite like it does in the plan. So that was really the biggest thing that came out of Jay's comment letter. He actually took the time to call me today, so we could sort of talk through that issue. So again, future, future revisions, which will take place in the next week or so, we would modify that in the plans and then we submit them back for Jay and John's review approval.
Are there any questions?
Kevin, I don't know if you want to do it now or after you open the public hearing, but there's a few comments that I, just to make progress between now and December, I'd like to talk about with the board and Chris. Do you want to do it now or after the public hearing?
Let's do it now.
So the first question, or the first issue is my comment number two, number three. If you look at, Chris, can you, the easiest plan, the simplest plan to see this on is sheet three of 19 that you have a plan set in front of you?
Sure.
There's two easements that I'm, there's a couple of easements, drainage. I'm assuming you're going to, you're going to want this to be a town road? Yeah. These are relatively small lot, so if you're coming down Oldenburg Lane, you'll see easement area number one, which is a rectangular area. See that? Here. I'll point it out. You're getting the wrong sheet. So here's one right here, here's the next one, and really, that's the next one. And what, I'm sort of torn with that third one, but I, I'd like to see if we could just make those part of the right-of-way. They're relatively small, I don't think they're critical for the lot area, and that way the town will own, there won't be any, any question as to who owns that land. The third one is relatively big, however, but the first two are pretty small. I don't know, Chris, do you have any thoughts on that?
The first two I wouldn't have an issue with, the third one...
Although pushes back your setback, that's, well...
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's where, that's where it runs into, you run into a problem. So functionally, this is just a side slope easement.
And I understand, I just want to make sure that when and if this becomes a town road, if there's maintenance that needs to be done there, now all of a sudden someone's planning to wander into the side of the road and something's happened, and it's a problem. You have the town would have to move it over, but you know, it's never as easy as, hey, this is part of the right-of-way. Is it critical to have the easement area here, Chris? Are those one, two, and three?
Just, just for purposes of...
No, no, is it, is it critical, does the town, is there going to be future maintenance required there?
Just the side slope of the road.
Nothing to do to suck to the west end?
I'm gonna go to two to one, which the road agent probably isn't, you know, like...
Did you change the radius of the cul-de-sac? I almost mentioned that.
I was smart enough to do that.
So I, I guess I don't know what to talk, you know, I don't know what to go about this, but I, this is not unusual, it's just that these, you know, these lots are relatively small, these are two-acre lots.
I'd do it in a heartbeat.
Well, and I probably wouldn't even ask you if they're two-acre lots, but because it's so small, I'm just concerned that people are going to use that as their yard, and if there is future maintenance required by the town, it could, it could be a problem, but maybe we could just ask Chris to look at that and come back in December with some more thoughts.
What's in the easement?
Just literally a grade and side slope, that's it. But what happens in five years is it's gonna be a hundred-year-smaller, it's lost off, and that material ends up in these people's yard. The town's going to go, they have to pull it back out, regrade it. That's when the town's going, and I don't, I'm not suggesting that's going to happen, but... So that's, that's the first issue, but I think we know, it'd be nice to get some, have some further discussion of it.
The only reason I'm not just outwardly saying we don't have an issue with that is, I'd like, I'd like to take a moment specifically with a couple of Jay's comments and make sure all the pieces of the puzzle fit still, you know, if, if we come back and we're able to design a system and a well that makes Jay happy and makes John happy, then we'll make it part of the road right-of-way, that's not a problem. But I don't, I can't see the solution right now, and so I don't want to just agree to it right now.
That's fair, that's fair. My question, my comment number 11, if you look at sheet, sheet four, 19... Next sheet, it's here, driveway locations. If you look at the driveways, there's, there's, well, I liked it, and I'm not a huge fan of shared...
I don't see driveways, John.
What was that?
Oh, you mean cutouts.
Yeah, the driveway, that's, yeah, yeah. I'm not a huge fan of shared driveways, but I'm also, you know, the town's going to be proud of this thing, and that is going to be nothing but a nightmare.
Well, you've got four in a row.
Right, four, that's exactly right.
You know.
And I think there's, you know, this is a good case where you could go to two, and they could, they can split almost immediately, but I think two curb cuts in that small area would make more sense, they could put them right in the lot lines. So...
Yeah.
Because they're so close that it's just going to, it's literally going to be down stop meeting this with town during the wintertime.
No, it's fine, we don't have a problem.
So just combine the two, the four and the two curb cuts, right of the lines, Chris? So lots two and three will have a shared driveway, and lots four and five.
Right.
Okay. Well, four and five are going to have to deal with that detention, with the drainage, but I think you can figure it out. You'll figure it out, I haven't had enough.
So you want to combine driveways and monuments?
Yeah, I guess John, number, there's number 11 talks about combining three and, three and four, which I don't have a problem with, but I do have a problem modifying five.
Well, could you move it over?
Five?
Would the slope allow for you to...
Just get some separation with shorted.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't mind combining one and two, and I don't mind combining three and four.
Okay, let's do one and two and three and four.
And then you can move five and four.
That's fine, someone combine one and two, so we're going to lose two driveways.
Perfect.
Perfect.
So now you're gonna combine one and two.
One and two, and three and four, and five will be moved over five.
And that's all I have, that's really the, that warrants discussion, so.
John, do you have any comments about the well radius and the right-of-way assault?
They do it, I mean, people do it all the time, they have wells in the, in the roads, in the road right-of-way. The reality is these wells are probably to be, I don't know, 500, 600, 700 feet deep, you know, the casing's going to go into bedrock, so the likelihood of salt contamination is probably slim, but it's a viable option, and then is to put the well out back, and that's what we have to do. If Chris says he can do it, then, he only has one radius in the, it's only lot five, is the problem, right, Chris?
Yeah. And I designed myself into a corner, and that's the only reason I put it there.
If he thinks he can pull the radius out of the road... If he thinks he can pull the radius out of the road, then I think we should try, that's fine. And that's all I have.
So, Mr. Barry, I think I'm the only member of the board that was here two years before. I think we spent three hearings last time, about a year and a half ago, in a site walk. Why is your client coming to us this soon again? What's the reason for this change after all the time you said on the previous site plan, subdivision?
Um, he's, I mean, he's primarily a single-family home builder, and so he would like to build single-family homes. That's, that's the difference. So, and, and it, in the middle of, in the middle of our last permitting process, John and I actually sat down and looked at an iteration of this plan to see what other options Claude might have on the, on the project. And at that time, we wanted to move ahead with the eight total units, and now he'd like to drop a unit and do singles instead of the three duplexes.
So, so the, so before, refresh my memory, how many duplexes were gonna be in this development?
Three.
Three. And how many condominiums are gonna be in this development?
Five.
Five.
So there's a, a net loss of one unit.
One unit.
And if he likes to be, build single-family homes, why aren't they being sold as single-family homes versus condominiums?
Um, that has to do with the required, so your open space ordinance, John and I have actually talked about how this should be fixed, and probably just hasn't. Your open space ordinance allows us to reduce frontages, lot areas, all sorts of things to, to generate open space and generate more densely developed areas. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't take away your lot width requirement. And so you're inherently flawing your ordinance because that lot width is still required. So by doing one of the provisions in the open space ordinance, which is to allow single-family homes to be on one lot and no feasible lot lines, we get around that lot width requirement. And so then we just generate limited common areas around the single-family lots, or single-family houses. We can build the single-family homes on limited common areas, so.
Okay. Is there any anticipated difference between the number of occupants in the condominiums versus what you would propose before?
There would be, we were proposing three-bedroom units then, and these would be three- and four-bedroom houses now. So you have a loss of one unit. So you're, assuming we build all four, four-bedroom houses, you'll have twenty bedrooms, and then you have three, oh, sorry, uh, let's see, six, eighteen. So the bedroom count would be within two bedrooms of one another.
Because my, my memory in your opening, you talked about the fact that the road's not very busy. And one of the major items of contention at the last hearing was in fact that people presently who live on that road felt that they, the traffic was traveling too fast, and that they felt in danger going out and, uh, walking along the road. In fact, the site distance from, um, the right-hand side of the, of the project, here, as you look downward, and so I, I don't share your, I just, your representation made at the, at the opening, but, all right, I don't need further, maybe for a round of applause.
Miles, Glenn, any questions, comments?
I'm curious how this would all be deeded, but it's, it's really...
So, so, you know, obviously, you know, I'm sure that the owner Claude would like to have these, you know, single, as fee simple lots, but as Chris said, the, the problem with our open space ordinance is that it doesn't eliminate the lot width. So there's no way you could do smaller lots with a two-hundred-foot width. So really, there's gonna be no difference. I mean, these are gonna be, these are gonna have survey bounds, just like their lots. It's just they're gonna be, they're gonna be common in the lots versus fee simple lots. So there's gonna be no practical difference. I don't think people buying lots are gonna know, or buying these, the limited common areas are gonna, I mean, they're gonna be told that they're different, but for all intents and purposes, it's gonna be exactly like in a fee simple lot. And I wish, I wish it could have been that way, but it, it just doesn't fit into our ordinance.
What's your concern, Miles?
Oh, it's, it's not actually a concern, it's just a... So each of the occupants would pay into a, a fund for the common...
It's gonna be absolutely no different than it was before.
Okay.
I mean, there's gonna, I would assume, and again, I'm speaking for the applicant, there's probably gonna be a, an association fee initially set up to main, to cover the maintenance of the road until the town, until, or unless the town accepts the road. And then there's gonna be a small, uh, there's gonna be an association that will oversee the management of the open space, but it's gonna be probably insurance, an insurance policy. So it's, it's gonna be the same as it was before, pretty much, I'd say.
Do we normally put conditions on an application to fund those...
We, we have to, yeah, we have to provide the HOA documents which specifically discuss the funding.
The rain gardens, that was an issue in the last round. Are the rain gardens within the, are they in the common areas, would associations gotta maintain those?
Yeah, so, one of the things I actually like about this design versus the prior design is because these limited common areas, limited common area means limited common. So you have a certain level of ownership of the land, but in general, it's common. So the rain gardens, to answer your question more specifically, are all within the limited common areas. So the association has the right to maintain those, those areas specifically. The difference between this and the duplex lots that we were creating was each duplex lot had a rain garden. So it was a little disjointed in that you could have three different people maintaining three different rain gardens. In this instance, you would have one group maintaining all of them.
What is the purpose of the rain garden?
Uh, capture storm water, treat it, and re-infiltrate it into the ground.
Did you consider or address Mr. Stevens' recommendation about the swale on Clement Road?
Uh, that's part of the project design.
Is it in there?
It is, yeah. So in my reply, I was just simply gonna point out where it is, what sheet we found on.
Questions, comments? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing for a public comment about, oh, except, yes, sorry. Motion, anybody, tell the exceptionist.
Yeah, I'll help make the, the sub- applications.
Oh, is it a favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is open, is there any, if you would state your name and your address before, before speaking, you are welcome to comment this.
Elizabeth Marca, Clement Road. I would like to reiterate your statement, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Board member, that it is not a quiet road, there's a dangerous rise there, and I really think it's unfortunate this is going in. The question I have for you, Chris, is the last meeting that I attended when it was gonna be duplexes, and we had a lot of butters here, it was mentioned that they were gonna be rentals. Are these gonna be rentals, or are these gonna be purchased homes?
Purchased homes.
Thank you.
Mr. Lowry.
Yes, Nelson Lowry, 327 Rollins Road. So as I understand it, this, this circular array of housing is gonna be a condo. How about the original, um, single-family dwelling, is that gonna be part of it?
Nope, so...
No, no, I mean, isn't there one, excuse me, may I?
Yeah.
Yeah, that guy right there.
So it's part of the subdivision, but not part of the condo association. So the association in these two single-family lots would have an interest in the open space, but this single-family home would not have an interest in these rain garden expenses.
Okay, I have another question. You've talked about moving wells and so forth, how about septic tanks and itching beds?
So, as part of Mr. Stevens' letter to us, he asked us to move two wells, and that change will require that I modify two of the leach fields on site.
Okay, so I'm, my concern that I expressed in a past meeting of the impact of effluent still stands, I would like to be assured that, that any change is not gonna impact on, on that original projection.
Nope, actually, the original projection from an effluent standpoint is decreased, because we're dropping one unit.
And you can assure us of that?
Yeah, I can do a, yeah, it's ready to take off based on the state loading standards.
Just may I ask another question with Marca, Clement Road again? I just wonder, hold on, I'm reading about all this stuff, but the other concern I had, I think anyone with a well is, you know, we're there now, and there's an aquifer, and I don't know how it's often... Is there any way to estimate, like, what those houses will be drawing, and if it might affect the aquifer?
Um, we, we talked about this at length at the original approval process. Each one of these houses will pull about four hundred and fifty to six hundred gallons per day out of the ground. So it's about a hundred and fifty gallons a bedroom, which is a state average. It's actually a little, the state average is a little high, but maybe that is better. Um, and this has to go through a state permitting process through Department of Environmental Services, and they review, they review groundwater take for that, that reason.
Thank you.
Ozaklis Clement Road, two eighty-one. I think you met Chris, you mentioned John. John, you made a comment about maybe moving that single-fee home back, it might be a better idea. Can, is there, is it okay for me to ask why you thought that? I know Chris and Clint...
Well, yes, because there's a, there's a tremendous amount of upland area here. This is a fair, this is a fairly small lot in here, and they could do it with a driveway along, along here without impacting the well, and so I just thought it would be nice when you drive in here to see more open space in this area, and have the house back here. I can't force them to do that.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, that, that's why. But, but Chris is right, there are benefits of, of leaving this open, to have a contiguous band of open space. My, my, my gut feeling is this is a fairly small building.
And Chris, you know, my question is, in terms of, I guess, following on your question, maybe it's not relevant to, you know, the approval process, but it's just so confusing. We went through quite a lot of, you know, rounds, like, like I'm still very confused about why Claude didn't even... Because I think that would have been a lot less of an issue when we were going through the first time. Like, I'm so confused about what changed, that he wants to do single-family homes right now. Because, you know, that was actually a, a big concern for all of us at first, then we went through, which is now we're hearing this, like, I'm just so confused, what happened?
I, I couldn't tell you what happened, I, I...
Does he like us to come here?
He, I build, I build by the hour, so no, probably not. I, I think, honestly, I think he looked at, he looked at building the duplexes, and again, for those of you that know him, he builds a quality, single-family home. That's what he builds, is what he's built in Rollinsburg and Dover, and many, many of the other areas, and I think that's what he decided he ultimately wanted to build here.
Celia Learpole, 426 Washington Street. Can you remind me where the snow's going to go during the winter, where the snow removal piles will be?
Sure, so, most of this, actually all of this room is a fill section, so as the snow plow comes through, it actually wings it off into the fill section. So we don't have cut sections of the roadway where snow piles against the actual roadway itself. And then a lot of this would be placed in the center, and then the snow that reaches off is actually gonna direct towards the rain gardens for treatment and re-infiltration in the ground.
So the snow that gets put in the center, when it thaws or melts in spring, is it going to flood the road and deteriorate the road service?
Nope, we've made accommodations for that. There's a, a outlet structure across Culbert that comes over the roadway, so that, that does not take place.
You said you were going to shorten the road. How does that affect emergency vehicles such as fire trucks and utility trucks getting in the holes?
It doesn't affect them at all. The original circle, which is the same exact size, was just positioned out here. And all we've, we've done is taken that circle and moved it back here. We've not shrunk the circle whatsoever.
So the trucks, large trucks, delivery trucks and stuff can still make that corner either direction?
That's right.
Okay. The, it was on the town ballot several years back, a shared driveway ordinance. Does anybody on the board know if the shared driveway ordinance went through on the town?
We approved two subdivisions on your list.
Yep.
Yes. Nine London.
Yes, we've approved two.
And so they're out in the community.
Against the planning boards, against the planning board's wishes at the time, yes.
And is there going to be some kind of documentation, either in the deeds of these homes or on the roads themselves, about what the condo association is going to be required to do, like maintaining the rain gardens and stuff like that?
Yes, that's part of the homeowners' documentation that's put together. When you legally create a condo, that has to be provided at that time. I would assume, John's a pretty clever guy, he's gonna make that a condition of eventual approval, that we submit that, and it likely be reviewed by John or somebody of their choosing.
I would highly recommend that signage go up too, just 'cause as ownership changes, sometimes things get lost in deeds and stuff like that, you know, it gets convoluted. People don't always read what they're signing.
Um, I have a question, Ozaklis Clement Road again, to the board, and maybe Chris can too, I'm sorry. So this plan, when, what they're submitting, so it doesn't require any kind of variance or anything like, so just, it's, as it is, we, we don't have to kind of, you know, give any variance to this project, right? So it's not just within the normal project limits?
Correct.
How about like, when this came out, there was a, kind of a worry around word condo, you know, I, what's the difference, is there any kind of cost-benefit analysis of single-fee, what did you say, single lot, versus...
Fee simple, fee simple lots.
Fee simple, yeah. What is, is there anything negative that we should know, or anything that doesn't even matter?
I don't think it matters to you. You said cost benefit, I, I, I mean, I probably shouldn't say this for Chris, but he probably already knows this. I mean, I think a condominium lot is probably worth less, a little bit less than a fee simple lot. You know, most people that are buying a house a lot wanna say, those are my four corners, and I own that in this entire, and I have a deed for it. This is a little bit different, but people do it all the time. So, you know, it's, if this was twenty years ago, I would say they're crazy, you know, they're, no one's gonna buy these. People have come to terms with the fact, it's a different, it's, it's, for all intents and purposes, it's gonna be the same as your lot, it's just that it's gonna be part of a condominium. So is there, is there a slight discount for these lots? I would say, I mean, you would agree, probably maybe a slight, slight, they're, they're, these are probably worth slightly less than a fee simple lot. How much, I don't know.
Yeah, Waringmark, Clement Road, that kinda makes me wonder, because most people I know will be condos, the buildings are connected together, and they all have to shell out when the roof needs to be fixed. Will that be the case with these?
Nope, no, in this case, this is, one of the reasons this form of development has actually become kind of popular is, you own your house, you own from the siding in, you own the whole structure. I, I actually own a condo, and I happen to own the one next to me also in a neighboring community, and in that instance, we own from the studs in, and when there's a roof problem, there's an entire, you know, the entire project has a roof problem. So with that regard, it is much closer, if not ninety-eight percent of the way, towards single-family homeownership. It's, it's almost identical. The difference is the, the physical ownership of the land that the structure sits on. We call them limited common areas because it is, it is an area that is designated to you, and you take care of it. You mow it, you deal with the snow in your own driveway, you deal with those types of issues. But the association has some responsibility in some areas, in this case, the rain gardens, to maintain that area and make sure that it's presentable, and that they have enforcement action against somebody in that if it's not maintained in the way that the HOA dictates. So that's the difference between a building and a... So that's the difference between a building and a lot.
And a second question, you may have already answered this, but when there were six duplexes, there were going to be six wells and now we're talking five?
Uh, there were six, uh, there was, okay, so there's six units, so three duplexes, and there were going to be three wells, but those, each one of those wells was going to be drawing the equivalent of two homes.
To the water tunnel.
Right, right. So you still have a net reduction in water draw.
I'm curious, I'd like to, Nelson Laurie, Rollins Road, I'd like to follow up on a point that you made. What is the enforcement for somebody who is not cooperating? So let's say that there is not neighborly harmony, where is the enforcement to, to force family X to do their duty and maintain their, their part of the, of the condominium?
I'd have to read the specific language in, most homeowner documents are almost identical nowadays, so I'd have to read what the language says, but there is enforcement action, there is an arbitrary process, or not arbitrary, there's an arbitration process and then there's, there's civil suit process.
So it sounded like it wouldn't be lengthy though, if, if one of these properties is not subdivisions caused what you will.
Sure, the difference is if you don't like the way your neighbor is mowing his lawn, you really don't have any action against that. In this case, there is some action that could be taken.
There are also been a few, there've been a few inferences to a question that I think I'll just address because it seems to be talked about. The, the open space subdivision, the cluster subdivision that allows that open space, if it were not for the condo association, it would be more complicated for the town to get tax revenue. That's now a inaccessible lot because of all these homes. So it has a reduced value on its own and it would not be allowed to be created otherwise on its own. So somebody has to own that and if it's left with the developer, then the developer has no incentive to pay those taxes and then it reverts to the town and it's off the tax rolls. And if it were to become a condominium association, then that value can be taxed through the association and all those homes can be responsible or leaned for that value. So there is that benefit from the town perspective.
Virginia Band, 375 Rollinsville. Who sets up the homeowners association?
Uh, we work with a local attorney, who I mentioned earlier, FX Bhutan, or Jim Schulte of Dover, and they, they put together the documents and then we submit them to the town for review.
Okay, I just want to make sure they are using by the town.
Yeah, I would assume, yeah.
Now, you moved, you moved the cul-de-sac. Who is, who is the butter that's right on that edge, right there? I can't read it from here.
Here?
Yeah, right on the edge of the circle. You pulled it down, so now it's right on. Oh, lot line.
Martin? Well.
Isabel Martin, Dawn, Lynn, Jeanette, Dawn, Jeanette and Lynn, Dawn, does that make sense?
No, it's Martin and Dawn, Isabel and Jeanette, must be like their mother or something.
Do they get, do they get, you know?
Visual bearing?
Advised as to that this, it's closer to, this is like right on their lot line, do they have to?
Well, the roadway was positioned here before, so the roadway came down, was against their, their lot line and the cul-de-sac came out here. So the difference is that this is, this is the circle now. They were notified as a butter, and we're carrying that vegetation, proposed vegetation line down to that, to that area also.
The other question I have is the, the rain gardens, you said that they are treated. How, how do you, how do you treat this water?
So the, the, a rain garden is built with different layers in it, it has a storage area and then there's a 18 inches of biomedial, this is a specific mixture of sand and loam and wood chips that we use, and then below that, there's a stone layer in the wall, as the water moves through those layers, it's filtered and cleaned. You can, if you have some time and are interested, you can go on UNH Stormwater Center and read all the documentation that they have.
I've seen some, and who maintains those? The homeowner has to?
Uh, the association would maintain those.
Okay, so do those get, do those get replaced, you know, if they have a five-year, because that one layer, especially with wood chips and samples?
So we're, we've been monitoring a number of these rain gardens now for about eight to 10 years. We haven't found any yet that actually need replacement. What they really need is, on about an annual basis, they need to be, need to be weeded out, weeded out. Sometimes they need to be tilled up because sometimes you do get some soil compaction. But other than that, we're finding that they're very low maintenance and that's why, that's why we use them, in my office, we use them a lot.
Do you encourage growth on them, you know?
Yes, yes, so these are designed with grass bottoms but with a certain vegetation style to be placed in amongst them, so it promotes nutrient uptake by those plants and it promotes some actual habitat also, so small, we find there's a lot of small birds that utilize it for habitat.
And my last question is, you said that these are three to four bedroom, are they all the same design as far as how many bedrooms there are in each? A four-bedroom house is pretty, you know, I, I think the four-bedroom house is pretty big, but.
Sure, so I hate it when I do this, but I happen to just take one of his common footprints and I just sort of plunked it around the subdivision. There will be some variation in what gets built out there, you know, garage left, garage right, colonial, keg, you know, that type of thing.
Two, three bed, three bath?
Pretty much, most of the houses now have two, two baths, whether they're a three or four bedroom, they pretty much all have two baths. That doesn't impact the water usage. But we're most.
But I, the reason I ask, sorry to interrupt you, the reason I say that is because the more bedrooms and the more bathrooms, the more people.
Sure.
If you had, you know, two bedrooms and one bath, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have six people living in a house, you know, which you could.
Right. But we also wouldn't have a marketable project with two bedrooms, that's what we're finding.
Elizabeth Markov, Clement Road again, sorry. I'm thinking about, so would a school bus, you're going to have, I mean, just so there are going to be kids living in there eventually, would a school bus go in and turn around and come out of there? Because I'm thinking, having someone living with me that's been taking the school bus for the past six months, it's dark out there. And again, thinking of a large, I mean, it's one thing for a car to get out of there, but for a big bus to get out of there, would the town be responsible for signage or something to tell people to slow down? I, I don't know if I'm hitting that driveway is going to be coming out, but that's just a concern.
So there's a, I guess, a couple of responses. I'm not sure a school bus would go down this road.
Okay, so kids might walk out.
Most, we're finding nowadays, school bus, the school bus companies can't go down every cul-de-sac, so they don't. They seem to stop at every driveway, but they can't go down cul-de-sac. Sorry for that. So there's, so I don't presume that the, the school bus would actually come down here. And then secondly, a school bus driver is sitting much further above where the driver's eye and the normal car is. This is, and we talked about this at length at the original meeting, this sits pretty much at the apex of the hill and we're, we're able to provide site distance at 3.75 feet, which is approximately this tall, looking at 3.75 feet, so the school bus is far, far below.
Mr. Laurie?
Yes, Nelson Laurie, Rollins Road. You said that the, you expect these, these four-bedroom houses to have two bathrooms. Now, is this two full bathrooms period or is this two bathrooms and a lav? That's my first question. My second question is, would the, a given owner of a, of a, of a unit be able to add a bathroom to his unit or is, would that be prohibited by condominium rules?
Chris, can I just? Sure. This, what they build on these is way beyond the planning board's purview. What we're creating is a lot, someone could build a 12-bedroom house if they could get a septic system.
Yeah.
So it's not, I mean, the planning board cannot control what someone builds on a lot. And so I don't think it's fair to, I mean, it's, it's a fair question to ask, Chris, and if he wants to limit these to three or four bedrooms, that's fine, but there's nothing to prevent, you know, once these lots are created, like any other lot in town, someone could build a four or five or six bedroom.
Let's not encourage that, John.
What's that?
Let's not encourage that.
Well, you could, well, you could, and you could do the same thing, you could put an addition on your house with three more bedrooms. As long as you net the setbacks and you can provide a septic system to, to deal with your waste, then you can do that. There's not, we don't have an ordinance that says no house shall be more than three bedrooms.
But I want to have nice neighbors, so I won't do that.
Well, in this night, right, yeah.
But in this instance, there, there must be condominium rules. So I'm just wondering if, if an additional bathroom could be, could be added, you know, potentially each one of these things.
Sure. Yes.
The rules wouldn't prohibit that.
Right.
Simon Pauls, Rollins Road. I want to go back to your original meeting, your line of sight was supposed to have been a fine, I remember correctly, 300 feet either direction. I questioned that then and I'm still questioning it now, because when you drive up Clement Road and you had an excavator sitting near the end, you couldn't see it until you were almost there. So I don't believe that you've got a clear line of sight 300 feet, especially coming out of that road looking right. And that should be, because that's downhill. But it's, the board, I think, really needs to address this clearly before anything is approved, because that will fall back on all of us and by then, the developer will be gone, as has happened in the past, here today and gone tomorrow. And the second thing is, are there going to be impact fees from this? No?
No.
Why?
We don't have, we don't have impact fees.
I believe they're actually in the, in the regulations, we just do not impart them because the administration of them and the rules regarding what they can be used for is.
Well, no, we, we have, we allow impact fees, we just don't have an ordinance, we don't, we don't have an actual impact fee.
Right, right.
We have a right to.
We have the right, we just don't do it.
We just don't do it. Meaning we have to take the next step and say, this is what the impact is, this is what the fee is, so we, we've never collected an impact fee.
And then you have to track that whole project and process and refund a lot of it. It's, it's an administrative nightmare endeavor, yes.
Virginia Band, Rollins Road. I think, the only reason I brought up the bedroom space is because I'm thinking about the number of people that are going to be living in, not, not as far as that type of, but the concentration is going to be over 30 people that are going to be in that area and now, nowadays, it's two cars per, per, or more.
Or more.
And I just think that, that, that needs to be taken into consideration, that's pretty high, our concentration of traffic coming in.
If I could say something, so we have an approved project now, in fact, the applicant sector is building it up. So we're not asking for any changes to this section of the road, we're not asking for any changes at the entrance, your review engineers review the site distance agrees.
It's one less dwelling, yes.
And it's one, and it's one less dwelling, so really, we have less traffic than we were proposing originally, so.
But in the duplexes, did you have four bedrooms per duplex?
I'd have to go back and look, but whether or not we had.
That's, that's my point, I don't think you would have.
Whether we had three.
Eight bedrooms in one, in one building.
Sure, so whether we had three or four bedrooms, traffic count isn't necessarily directly attributed to bedrooms. It's directly attributed to the type of housing style. So we use national standards to determine how much traffic comes and goes from a project based on the housing style, based on unit count. So we're down in unit count, the housing style is a little different, and we're not changing any aspect of this design that would affect site distance or traffic onto Clement Road.
John, do you recall, either of the Johns, the traffic conversation the first time around?
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of it. I mean, the, the issue is, I don't think, whether there's 70 trips a day out of the year or 20, I, I don't think it matters. I think that the discussion was, I think the, the bulk of the discussion was surrounding the site distance. And, you know, if there's, if there's six, six homes here, you're probably talking about 60 trips a day, is that fair? Something like that. So I, again, whether it's 60 or 80, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the issue. I think it's whether or not, you know, people feel comfortable with an entrance. We discussed it at length, we had sidewalks, we've had two engineers review that site distance and they both concur that, that there's adequate site distance. It doesn't seem to jive with what a couple of butters have said and I think John was, you, you were opposed, you didn't, you didn't agree either, as I recall. So that's, that's sort of, I think, what the history of this thing was.
But at this point, it's all a moot point because they have an approved plan for a road at that location. So really, the question is just to modify the lot shapes and dwelling units or not. Mr. Ross?
Nothing, just, yeah, I'm just listening.
Oh, okay, Mr. Ross had it behind you, had his.
He may have an approved plan, but he doesn't have building permits yet, so you could actually hold the building permits out until he can prove to everybody that he has a clear line of sight for safety.
I, I think that ship has sailed because he has an approved plan, so if we were to do that, we'd be sued. Because, because the, the initial conversation for this subdivision, when it happened and it was approved, all those conversations happened and they were approved for the road at its location. So you, we would have no standing for holding up building permits.
So let's flip the coin and just say it does become a problem, then who's going to hold it? The town?
Absolutely.
Or the developer?
The town, because we approved the plan when we approved the plan.
Then all right, then let's hold the plan up and say we've made a mistake, it has to be fixed.
If we were to do that now, our only recourse is to not approve this and he has the original subdivision, which still has that road at that location.
Then we don't have to accept the road. I mean, that is us.
Well, yeah, we, we, we do.
Oh, no, no, I think what you're saying is.
No, no, no. When it goes to a town meeting.
At a town meeting, yes.
Right, we can say no and then it will fall back upon the developer to constantly maintain the road.
I disagree, because again, in approving that plan with the intent that it become a town road, there is, the intention there, I, I think, again, you're, you're opening us up for, for lawsuit.
I disagree, I think because if, if they, if we feel there's a safety issue, we as the residents of this community, I think, need to be fully addressed and I would think the developer and his engineering firm would want to make sure that we were 110% satisfied.
I completely agree with you, except to say that that was a year and a half ago or two years ago and at this point, the road is, is there and they're approved for that there. So the question in the public hearing tonight is about the modification to the plan to allow single-family homes and fewer overall units. Is there any more questions or comments about the revision of the existing plan?
Just one request, Chris, do you mind sending me, you have my emails still, like the plans, so I can share it with the, some of the neighbors who actually born here, so we're going to have actually a, you know, meeting, that'd be great.
I'm willing to do me this out right here and now.
There you go.
I, that brings me like really bad memories, John. I don't want paperwork like that. I'm traumatized by those three meetings back to back. My kids still talk about it.
I'll drop them off later, though.
Now, there is another development in town that's similar, I think it has the same number of houses in a cul-de-sac settlement circle and from my recollection, that is not a town-maintained road, that's a homeowners.
It is a town, but I believe they have a, they may have a homeowners association, but the town doesn't plow it.
So, but the homeowner, so that would be similar to this where there's a homeowners association that helps maintain that area?
I don't know, I, I wasn't around on the planning board, I don't know if Johnny could speak to that, I wasn't here to approve of that.
So what happens is in most new subdivisions is there's an association set up to do a number of things. One is maybe deal with common areas, in this case, there's no lawn mowing or anything, it would just be an insurance policy over the, over the common areas. They might, they might maintain the rain gardens and then they're going to maintain the road, it wouldn't be the developer, it would be the, the homeowners that share in the, in the maintenance of this road until it's, and if it's accepted by the town. Ultimately, if the town doesn't accept it, they're going to, they're going to maintain ownership of it for, you know, forever. And then once the town would accept it, then that, then that portion of their responsibility would be relinquished. That's how it typically works.
I changed my mind, John, I'll take them if you donate it.
He's donating them.
Chris, it'll be easier to print it.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions of the public? We'll close the public hearing. Will close the public hearing? Okay, yes, we're going to have to...
Can I ask one more question? Question is, is lighting your signage changing all your plans?
Signage?
Air lighting? Any difference in vegetation of the original plan?
Are you good?
Yeah, I guess I'm good, I do think, because I think it's a little bit, the other comment, it's more a comment is, I think in terms of disputes between the neighbors, you are creating potential complexity. And this is why I say that, so you've got these homes, right? That, can you bring up the ones that show the common areas the best? So you have these, so the common areas, these big Vs, right?
No.
No? Where are the common areas?
Whole lot, well, that's a common.
Okay, what else is common?
That's it. Well, the road will be common, until it's accepted by the town. And those are limited commons, so those would be basically like your house lots.
So the only common areas are here, and the big space out back?
Correct.
Okay. It just, I guess I was getting the impression for some reason that, so can you, for my...
Those are setbacks.
These are setbacks, setbacks.
Those are structural setbacks, from the sidelines.
All right, the only complexity I see is that if you had a, you know, if you have one neighbor next to another neighbor, that neighbor one can take neighbor two to court. If you have a complaint by one of the condo owners about a common area, you have to get the condo association to enforce the complaint, not the, in other words, property owner one can't sue property owner three or four directly, it's because you've got to go through the condo association to do that. I believe it does add a layer of complexity, maybe a huge layer, but I think you take away that remedy in doing that. That's the end of my comments.
Did I forget one more thing? Have you had a change in administration of the fire department?
Not recently.
I just want to know if anybody wanted to revisit the P cul-de-sac or the T cul-de-sac, or they just...
I'm not redrawing this again, John.
I, I, that is not a change of feeling about that.
It's too bad, I mean, it's funny that many towns do, you know, have these, used T cul-de-sacs with great success, but it'd be heck of a lot less, you know, pavement out there, but it's the way it is.
It's like they don't make reverse fire engines anymore or something.
If it was a two-mile-long road, I understand it, but, you know, to back down that road, you know, in a situation where there's a fire, whatever. It's a fight we're always going to have.
Okay, do we need a vote to continue?
Yes, yes, we can do a date.
All right. December 4th, does that work? I think that's the next Tuesday, first Tuesday in December.
I'll wait to continue this application to the December 4th meeting. I'll say it.
Thank you, all favor?
All right.
Fine, okay.
So, my expectation and your expectation is that I take care of the technical, outstanding technical items, bring back a revised set of plans. I didn't hear any items that came from the board tonight that require plan revision, other than the easement areas and the driveways, which we'll address as part of John's comments, but...
Yeah, if we could get a letter from Jay, his is fairly brief, but it'd be nice to get either no comments, or, you know, maybe a couple. I mean, I don't think the board wants to make a condition, or grant a conditional approval. If he's got 25 comments, it would be as, you know, either none or two or three, that would be pretty good, so. And I know he's busy, so the sooner you can jump on him, the better.
Thank you for the example.
All right, thank you. No, it's not, I'm driven.
What? Who's our daughter after 20 months?
Michael Garretby?
Maybe he should tell him to grow up. My God, she's still...
I haven't, on and off for six years.
Celebrate it on Saturday or Sunday.
I would, but that's, Tuesday's the day that my kid is going to come. Then I can go out.
Well, given that we do not currently have a sub, do we need to have a meeting?
No, we don't.
All right. Thank you. You and I'll be in touch about, you know, what best, you know, best group of bribery has to take place here presently. Okay, have anybody had a chance to look for the minutes last meeting? Are there any comments or revisions about that? All favor?
All right.
All right, thank you. Correspondence, I don't believe there is any. Other business, the review of proposed zoning changes. We started talking about that at the last meeting. We agreed on four potential changes to the zoning ordinance to put on the ballot. So I just wanted to revisit with you all. I thought I grabbed the timeline, but apparently I didn't. I just think we ought to think about setting public hearing dates.
Can you review it the foreword, because I don't do that, I have any record of them.
I have them there in a minute.
One is the accessory dwelling unit, making sure that we are congruent with state law.
Yep.
One is fixing the special exemption in C1, according to the revisions that took place this past year.
Yep.
We need to change every reference to the Board of Selectmen to include or designate.
Yep.
Is accessory, did you say accessory? Yeah.
ADUs first.
Yeah, accessory dwelling units.
There's a special provision, a strike? Maybe that's the one, sorry.
Oh.
8.1.2.10.
I have that on page 48, and that's section 8, the special provision. That has to do with the special exemption in C1, I think that's, we have to revise.
What was that citation, Sarah?
It's 8.1.2.10, special provisions.
Which is on approximately page 48, depending on which version you have. And so, those are three, and then the fourth, we had talked about growth ordinance.
After all, I was in court late today, and I ran here, I got here a little late, and I apologized, and I forgot my pad, I forgot to put on that.
That's really okay, so I sent you all a few emails right before this meeting, one... One of which is language about accessory dwelling units, so that we can revise that appropriately. And one about...
Growth ordinance.
Growth ordinance, or, you know, so I'm not remembering what our fourth revision was, because we had talked about changing zoning somewhere, and we had talked about growth ordinance. And somehow, I, so, I remember we had discussed planning here, if you're in a potential charrette, I said that was one of the emails, information about that, which is a good amount of administrative, like, work if we were to undertake that, for a huge value, tens of thousands of dollars' worth of, you know, advice about what we can do about things. So it's worthwhile, but it's a heavy lift for time. So, growth ordinance, I, somehow, I think we decided to table that one and not address. There was something that we had discussed, can you pull up the minutes?
So, we discussed signing of building permits, possible growth management ordinance, creation of commercial zones, accessory dwellings, the special provision to be stricken, relevance of shared driveway ordinance, creation of investing timelines.
So shared driveway investing, I'm sure we decided to...
Hold off.
Hold off on. So, the fourth, I'm not sure if we decided that we were addressing growth ordinance or commercial zoning. But I don't think we have enough information to change this year.
To go back a couple of years, Mike had, remember Mike had started, when Mike first became a selectman, he had set up an economic development committee that never got off the ground.
Yes.
And the one thing that they had asked the planning board for, and I think the only thing that we could sort of get behind, and I think we talked about this last time, was Oak Street. But, you know, there's nothing's going to happen this year, and maybe nothing's ever going to happen.
I, well...
It's too late now to deal with it, and...
Yeah, I think we have to be specific for March, and I think there's not enough time to get specific about...
But I think it's, you know, I think if there's going to be any commercial rezoning in this town, you know, the planning board would have, I almost think, that would come after like a planned new Hampshire charrette.
Yes.
Because, you know, maybe someone says, hey, let's gobble up a little bit of root for, I don't know, I doubt it, but maybe. But, you know, where else do you have to go, other than Oak Street and Root Forest? So...
That's my recollection, which leads me to believe that I think we were thinking about looking at growth ordinance.
That's what I thought a little bit of that, but...
Because conceptually, that's a lot to talk about, but in terms of language and specificity, it's pretty easy to implement as a proposal, if that's a goal of this board.
So, I recall part of the conversation, and I think, John, you were discouraging us from limiting, like...
Yeah.
Outright limiting, right? And I don't remember why exactly.
Well, the reason I hate them is that, first of all, I don't, I just went through this in a town in Elliott, Maine. For years and years and years, they were doling out, I think, 21 or 22 buildings from it annually. And what would happen is, that's how they, they thought over a 10-year period, they didn't want to issue more than around 220 permits or whatever it was. Well, the problem is, is that in a recession, they didn't issue more than a handful, two or three. So when the economy was going well, and there was a demand of 30, they couldn't hand out 30. There was no go-over provision, and it was a nightmare to administer, and they were basically controlling, regulating the housing market, you know, artificially. So, my thought is, and I felt this way for many, many years, if you want to, the best way to control growth is to have good zoning ordinance. So whatever you get for a subdivision, you're happy with. Finally, you're not going to be happy with everything. The second thing is, if you think that there's a cost of development that we're not capturing, maybe an impact fee would be appropriate. And if an impact fee doesn't work, then I think the third, the last, the last thing that you could consider doing would be a growth management ordinance. I just don't like them, because I think that you're manipulating the housing market artificially.
Well, isn't that really about how the regulation is written? So, you know, my reason for bringing it up is because we have a half dozen or dozen significant-sized properties. And you could get a large subdivision that would require a lot of, you know, like a double-digit percentage growth in our housing stock. And implementing, installing infrastructure and school capacity within a couple of years, within a one or two years for the implementation of all those building permits, could be catastrophic for us. So, you know, I understand that for emergency purposes, I think we can freeze it for like a year, just to, you know, figure out how we're going to cope.
Yep.
But I'm not sure that that's a better answer than saying something like a limit of 10 per developer within the same zone, or something like that per year. Not necessarily an overall cap, or a, you know, a percentage of current housing stock per developer. So it's not even about the overall growth necessarily, but, you know, if you targeted about a specific developer, and I'm not sure if that reaches the end goal in that they can subdivide their huge subdivision, but at least you're not getting this one subdivision in this one area, 200 homes in a year, or something like that.
I think we have to seriously look at either impact fee or growth management ordinance. I think we're one of the, and Bobby John, I think that Elliott's a beautiful town, so whatever Elliott's done, they've done very well. I would emulate.
Well, York is a good example, York had a growth management ordinance for years. They finally got rid of it, and they found, it's been gone now six years, no change. So, what it does is, you know, the issue of 90 permits when the economy is good, means you're 30 when it's bad. So, instead of controlling it, it's been far better without it, but...
But I'm not, you know, I think we need to look at both, because I think, I mean, our taxes, what I, I think, a good chunk, a lot of people concerned with the increase in taxes. You know, you get a large development, it's going to put a big strain on, you know, additional police officer, more school personnel, and I think it's reasonable to consider how that burden's going to be allocated. And so, as well as just, you know, growth is great, unregulated growth, I think, could be bad. I don't, no offense, I don't want it to turn out to be some areas, I think, in the area that have grown without enough consideration of that. So all I'm asking is, I think we need to look at it, whether that will be ultimately adopted or not. Maybe we don't, but I think we need to look at both those issues.
Yeah, I don't think we can sit back and ignore, pretend that there's, you know, this, like you said, a dozen or so areas where there's the potential for these large subdivisions. I think we at least need to be prepared, and I don't know what that looks like.
So, I gave you a sample, one, the email today that you can look at.
Well, and like, I mean, just the administration of the impact fees, where it goes and having to do all that, that's a lot. Now, your idea is a different route, because the impact fees require that we justify...
There's a trade-off between the administration versus the increased cost to the taxpayers. Again, I'm not saying that one is, that I have a firm fit for impact fees, I just think we've got to consider both options. So someone walk through the door.
You know, you did spend some time, you know, you spent some money having Bruce Mayberry do an impact, who's the guy in the impact fee business, writing or looking at Rollins for probably seven, eight years ago. You might, I think it might be helpful to invite him back, maybe pay him a thousand bucks and have him at least go through the numbers again and see if anything's changed.
Were you going to reach out to him? I thought we hadn't actually, someone was going to reach out to him.
I can reach out to him.
And do you have the original report that he created?
Yeah, I think that's what we've been working for, right.
And maybe he does, I don't know, because I haven't seen that, but I think that would be a good starting point, to look at that, read through it, and then see...
Okay, I will get that.
You know, for ourselves, if we think it applies or if it needs revision.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure, I'm sure he'll tell you it needs revision, but, you know what, just generating the numbers, I don't think there's been a whole lot of change between now and six years ago. But, you know, it's interesting that someone in the crowd tonight said, and it was the guy in the ZBA, wasn't it?
Because that's Mr. Fosstr.
Do you collect impact fees? Well, I don't know if you guys know this, but if you go to Dover to build a single-family house, the impact fees are in the $20,000 range. And I remember when we were talking to Bruce Mayberry, someone said, well, what happens if I want to give a lot to my son? Is there an exemption? And I'm like, no, a house is a house. So, that's the bitter reality, is that if you, you know, all of a sudden, you know, a $400,000 house is, or a $350,000 house is, you know, $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 more, depending on the impact fee, and everybody pays it. So it's whether or not...
But the accounting on that is extraordinary.
And that's the biggest problem, you know, when you guys issue six building permits a year, there's, you're never going to spend this money. It's, what you're waiting for is when someone comes in and wants 30 permits, but you can't do that. You know, you've got to start collecting on day one, and you're right, you've got to set up escrow accounts for every single, every single impact fee, and then you've got to monitor whether or not any money was spent towards that end, and if it wasn't, you know, you give it back with interest, so...
So someone walked through the door and asked for, you know, a 30, 30-unit subdivision. We have the ability to assess an impact fee, or you don't?
No, you, no, not right now, you don't, you don't have an ordinance.
And the conversation started when we were doing the Tri-City up behind Market Basket, and he wanted to put in 300 units.
Yeah.
So we want to get ahead of the curve with that next Tri-City.
Yeah, and what does that mean? What does that look like? Is it impact fees, or is it growth ordinance, management ordinance, or was it something else?
Yeah, I think, they're good questions, you know, like, it's, now's the time to do it.
I would just like to see this group continue to look at our regulations, to see... I would just like to see this group continue to look at our regulations to see how we can every year, but even in between, you know. Zoning has to go before town meeting, so that's, you know, this is the time of year to do that. But so let's focus on what we can address that way. But I think we ought to continue to be reminded through the applications before us, but also through what we see in our town and what's going on, how we might revise our regulations throughout the year to be aligned with the master plan, which is due for revision. And maybe talk about that too, not right now. I mean, you know, briefly now if you want, but I, you know, we ought to plan for revision of that.
No, what I was gonna say was, you know, the other thing that came to mind tonight was, you know, the reason that Chris is pitching this condominium subdivision is because obviously he can't make those lots conform with the zoning ordinance. It'd be interesting to hear, I, Mike wrote the open space ordinance, but I think he did, probably stole it from somewhere else, I hear everybody else does. But I don't know why that lot width was saved. And it'd be nice to hear, I'd like to hear, I wonder if Mike would remember why they didn't get rid of that? Because they reduced everything else but the lot width. It could have been an oversight.
I'm sure he'll talk with something.
Because that's something, you know, if we're gonna reduce lot sizes, maybe we say in an open space subdivision, the lot width is reduced to 100 feet. And then all of a sudden, you know, you have a viable open space, you know, ordinance. But there may have been, I don't remember why that's in there, but it's weird.
He's in meetings, man.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting he has it now, but he may not remember or it may, like you say, it may have just been an oversight. But...
But we ought to look at that.
Yeah, look at it, you know, and I'm not saying you reduce it 50%, but maybe you reduce it, you know, to 120 feet with it and then you can have a, you know, be a lot.
Or a percentage of whatever's required in zone.
Sure, sure, yeah. But I think the list, you know, right now is, it's probably enough to handle for this year.
Yes, so...
Especially if it's gonna be, there might be a pretty long ballot.
There will be a long ballot, but we're in the age of there will be a long ballot every year now. So let us not be dissuaded.
Just to make those four pages get crossed along.
Yes, we have to keep to three pages.
The three, the fourth is...
We're only budgeting for three.
The fourth is the budget, right?
Well, right, because we've got one question that brings us to the next line. So I want to go through the calendar because the calendar, I have the calendar that says the first. You know, it has to happen within a range of...
Why do you check this one up?
The taxes?
Well, the assessment, right? We assess the whole...
Yeah. They, they bond up the value of the...
Yeah, we're saying a cheese sheet. If you have a pie, they're gonna go along.
Okay, so the first question is, would we anticipate a second hearing on any of these conversations?
I would say yes. Probably should.
So then, so Thursday, January 3rd is the last day to publish, to post and publish the notice for a first hearing.
Are you giving the SB2?
Yes. So there are petitions last day to propose. Last day to accept petitions. So that's really interesting. It goes all the way back to December, but it does not address what is the first day to post and publish notices for the first hearing on January 14th for proposed adoption or amendment of zoning ordinance. So January 14th looks like it's a Monday, last day to hold a first public hearing.
So we have to have our first public hearing on January 1st?
Yeah, that's what it looks like, is that that's the... So Tuesday, January 8th, I would suggest is our, well, unless you think we're gonna... I would say we're probably not meeting on the 1st. So January 8th looks like when we would have our January meeting. And that's the last day for voters to petition.
And looking at these zoning amendments, the only thing, if we're talking about ADU compliance, I think we're compliant, but I'm not positive. I'll go through that.
It's square footage. Square footage, I think, is where we're not.
Okay. My point is, if we're not compliant, it's a very minor issue.
Yes.
And then the other two are really, so we probably won't have a second public hearing. I don't think anybody's gonna show up to these, so it's probably gonna be one and done. So I, you know, so I wouldn't worry about the second one. It's not like we're proposing anything crazy. I mean, the Board of Selectmen or the designated is just gonna be a change, you know, a sort of a cleansing of the ordinance.
So we have pretty much any time in January, we can do this.
So why don't we come back to the December meeting? I'll have something, the ADUs, I'll write them up, with the exception of the Board of Selectmen. I'm not gonna do that for you to respond.
You and I can work on that, I think.
Well, I don't think you need to. I think all I think you need to do is the ballot question is gonna say you're gonna change the word.
I think in the minutes, it kind of has the wording that needs to be...
Change the word Board of Selectmen to Board of Selectmen or the designated.
Yeah.
Select Board.
Yes, we, yes, we, yes. They're not a Board of Selectmen, they're a Select Board.
Why are you a Select Board?
It happened a few years ago with, someone took issue with a perceived gender...
Cool.
District agency, the word selecting. So Select Board seemed more gender neutral.
Select Board number...
Yes. All right, so we can wait on the whole thing then and talk about setting public hearings December 4th since we don't have to, if you could make a note to add that to the agenda of December 4th to select a public hearing date in January for...
I just added it.
How we do it in January.
It'll be a regular...
Yeah, regular meeting in January, which looks like it's gonna be the 8th.
Yeah.
All right.
And I haven't heard about anything else coming in, so I don't...
We'll have to change, we'll have to discuss the day change anyways.
That's true.
That's for December 4th. I'll remember that.
Okay.
Have you heard of anything else coming in?
No.
Okay.
You?
Nothing to the point that it's gonna get here immediately, no. I don't think so.
Calvin, I didn't get the email today. I didn't get any email. I don't know if you ever had...
The last week came like 6:30 or 5:00, 6:30, 5:00.
No, I'm not seeing them on my phone now.
All right, so I'm gonna check to make sure, can you give me your email address and I'm gonna make sure... Do you get, when somebody emails the group, are you getting group email?
Yes, yeah, I get the minutes and stuff.
Well, that's because I don't use the alias. I have my own, I have my own setup.
Okay, what is it?
The alias is worse than that.
It's Glenn, G-L-A-N-N, DocChase@concast.net.
So I will forward to you what I sent this afternoon and then I will check to make sure you're in the group email list.
Cool.
Thank you for letting me know.
By the way, and I'll go ahead, what happened to the gentleman that was interested in being on board?
He was invited to this meeting.
How come? Maybe he was here, you didn't see him?
Do you ever know if he was here?
You're right, I don't know. I don't think so because I recognized everybody who was here, I think. I think. So unfortunate, but thank you for following up. Yeah, any other items?
No.
Okay.
I'll move to a jury.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.